Welcome, everybody. I'll call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023. This meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation, and please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent, and both Counselors Scott and Mbah will be joining us. Counselor Scott will be joining us remotely soon. Pursuant to Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there counselors wishing to remember community members? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that the council remember Charles Daniels. He was a Somerville resident for the last 35 years where he lived with his longtime partner Susan Bursler, who most, if not all of us know from her work with the Nave Gallery. I had the fortune of meeting Mr. Daniels in his professional sense once a year for many years in a row at the ballet recital, where he was the photographer for my daughter's ballet and also did the video. Little did I know that, in addition to the soft-spoken photographer, Mr. Daniels was also known as the Master Blaster. He was a legendary emcee back in the early days of the Boston rock and roll scene in the '60s and '70s. His life story is amazing, and I could go on and on. I have highlighted notes of things that I thought would be good to share, but at the end of the day, in the interest of just trying to keep this brief, I thought I'd read the bit that was written by Ms. Bursler for a GoFundMe that was put in place a few years ago in order to get to develop these some 3,000 rolls of undeveloped film. Which, I'm happy to say, has been developed over 90,000 images. How that all will be displayed, now there's a small showing at the Nave Gallery this past fall, but this work will live for many years, if not forever, because of the way that it documented rock history. So let me read this little bit. "Some of you may know Charles, aka Charlie, as an accomplished Somerville, Massachusetts photographer, who shows up with his camera when something beautiful and a bit mysterious is unfolding: dancers in a parking lot, a festival of fire in Union Square, a hidden rave under McGrath Highway. But as you get to know him better, crazy stories come out, because Charles is also the Master Blaster, a legendary emcee who danced onstage with his tambourine through the turbulent '60s when international bands and local rockers tore up the Boston Tea Party in the South End. As the Master Blaster, Charles was Peter Wolf's 3:00 AM sidekick on WBCN, Boston's revolutionary radio station. In the '70s, he toured the U.S. with some of the most famous musicians in rock history, hanging out and horsing around, hitting hotel pools and green rooms from the Las Vegas Strip to the middle of nowhere. And where he went, so did his camera. Sometimes known as Two Nikon Charlie, Charles always had a camera with him, shooting whatever caught his eye. This is how he lived his life, through the lens. Over the years, hundreds of film canisters accumulated, stuffed in drawers, boxes, and closets. We know these rolls contain rare glimpses from the legendary Boston rock scene that Charles was a part of. We also expect surprises from 1960s anti-war protests to ordinary people on the streets of Boston caught in a revolutionary moment." If folks aren't familiar with this story, there was a great article in The Globe about two weeks ago, end of January, when Mr. Daniels passed away. And if you just search his name and "Somerville photographer," you will find, just as I said, an endless number of stories recounting his life, his adventures. The bands that he traveled with were the Rolling Stones, the Who, obviously the J. Geils Band. Peter Wolf gave him the name, the Master Blaster. They were very close friends until the end. And it's just, it's an incredible story of an incredible person who left us an incredible gift. We will have these images forever, and I'm personally very grateful for that. I can't wait to see more of them as they're ultimately processed. The GoFundMe is still up and running for additional funding to figure out how to ultimately house and display this work, but it's just really something. So take a look at the GoFundMe page, because the updates there have an incredible number of stories as well, and little images as some of them were developed, some really cool shots of some of the most legendary icons and music. So I ask that he be remembered.
Thank you, counselor. Are there others? All right, I'm going to ask everyone who's able in the chambers, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll keep Mr. Daniels in our thoughts. Thank you all. Colleagues, before we get started, I'd just like to note, for anyone watching this remotely who's not in the room, you might not notice that we have closed captioning running live for the meeting, which is something that many people in local government have been working towards for years. So I want to give a huge thank you to everyone in the Clerk's office who made this possible. And just a reminder to everyone that you have to speak into your microphone and try to speak clearly so that the technology can pick up your words. All right, so we have a number of items that we're going to take up out of order. After the public hearing, we're going to take up item 10.4. That is a citation for the great Nicole Igbret. After that, we're going to take up some items where we have public speakers. Items 4.3, having to do with the Hanscom Airport Expansion Resolution. After that, we have a speaker from the Center for the Arts at the Armory. That's 5.1. After that, Counselor Burnley would like to sponsor a speaker for item 10.6, having to do with COVID testing. After that, we're going to take up the Confirmation of Appointments Committee Report, because we have in the chambers with us tonight an important promotion in the Fire Department. And then we have two more items after that. The administration is requesting immediate approval of a home rule petition to extend chief femino's service in the Police Department. And after that, Counselor Wilson is going to outline our budget priority process for the year. With that, so more than usual, out of order tonight. Let's take up the next item, please.
We'll first take up item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes of the Organizational Meeting of January 2, 2024, and item 1.4, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of January 11, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, those items are laid on the table for approval.
The next item is item 3.1, A Grant of Location by Extonet Systems to Install 54 Feet of Conduit in Washington Street From Existing EverSource Utility Pole 358/66 To A Proposed Small Wireless Facility Node On Existing EverSource Utility Pole 358/66A Located Near 415 Washington Street.
I declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak? Please use the raise hand function if you're here remotely. All right, we're going to count down from three, two, one, and we will lay this item on the table.
That will then bring us to the first item that we're taking out of order, which is item 10.4, A Citation by Counselor Burnley Commending Nicole Igbret for the Relentless Pursuit of Housing Justice as the Director of Community Organizing for the Community Action Agency of Somerville.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through you. I thought I'd start off this meeting with a joyous occasion that can bring this council and community together. I'll try to be brief, because I know that our community's time is precious, and our current organizing director for CAS has only a few more days in her contract. But I want to take a moment to just honor her as an organizer that has been supporting this community through one of its most difficult chapters. I'm going to take this off just very briefly. I first met Nicole Igbret in January of 2021, in a time when massive layoffs were tearing apart our nation's social safety net. Somerville residents were more frightful than in living memory of being displaced, and when the connection between public health and housing was made stark by advocates who chanted things like, "Housing is the cure." We met in front of the Somerville District Court, where, in her capacity as the Community Action Agency of Somerville's new organizing director, Nicole had organized renters like me to tell our stories of housing insecurity and demanded that the state and the city extend their eviction moratoriums and fund the safety and health that our communities deserve. Over the past nearly four years, I've watched Nicole lead eviction defense protests, Know Your Right canvases, and even direct negotiations between landlords and tenants. I know that when she has spoken truth to power in her current role, she has given hope not only to the tenants in the direct line of fire, but also to all residents who fear for the future of this city as it becomes more unaffordable. Her presence has made Somerville better, and I am very grateful for the work that she's done. For her service to our community and for modeling what it means to be a true neighbor, I'd like to present her with this citation, but only after I sponsor her to share any wisdom that she has with our community. Nicole?
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Willie, Counselor Burnley, and the council. For those of you who don't know, I've only been living in Somerville for a little bit more than four years. I just, I moved here right before the pandemic started, and I began at CAS at the end of summer 2020, after being the statehouse for three years and in the middle of an ongoing global health and eviction crisis. And I really feel that I am proof that you don't need to live in Somerville for generations or even more than a few years to make an impact. And the key to that success and what's guided me, though, has been to listen deeply, be humbled, but be principled, and leverage the resources in the community that have always been here. And I'm honored that CAS and Somerville took a chance on me, because I saw and felt the culture of activism and civic engagement that's been here for generations. And the organizing that we've done at CAS isn't necessarily radically new, but it did reimagine and reprioritize who would be the leaders. We centered economic justice for our low- and no-income tenant neighbors, language justice for immigrants who couldn't speak English, disability justice in a world now ravaged by COVID, racial justice for Black, Latina, Asian, and Indigenous people, and queer justice for our LGBTQ neighbors. And I'm so proud and grateful that I've had this opportunity to plant the seeds of a new generation of housing justice movement here in Somerville and a new generation of leaders, many who have never felt that they belong here, even after living in Somerville for 10, 20 years or a lifetime. So as this work has transformed individuals, myself included, it's also transformed our city and, you know, some of our shared victories, right? The longest COVID eviction moratorium municipally in the state. We had Somerville landlords sign eviction diversion pledges. We've had more than 15 successful tenant unions and campaigns to stop displacement, including 12 Pleasant Avenue, which is the newest victory between the Office of Housing Stability, CAS, and the Somerville Community Land Trust. You know, this past budget cycle, right? More than $3.5 million towards desperately needed housing needs, in addition to the free cash, and now the strongest rent control home rule petition in the state, including more than 150 individual pieces of testimony sent to the legislature this past week. And I think the most beautiful part is that through this work, we have together mobilized thousands behind this vision that housing can and must be a human right in Somerville. So I just want to thank you each so much for your trust and partnership over these years and the city as a whole. You know, the work doesn't stop here, and while I'm transitioning out of my role at CAS, I'm very much still a part of this movement and this community as your neighbor. And so my ask is that, to the city council, you will please continue supporting the transformative power of tenant and community organizing. And my last message being, on my shirt tonight, my CAS shirt that says, "Build collective power with your neighbors," because that's been kind of like the secret ingredient, right? Because it's through our unity and organizing as neighbors, we can transform the world. Thank you all so much.
I want to talk to, does anybody else want to talk on this? Counselors McGlaughlin and then Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Nicole, I'd say goodbye, but I'm going to see you in the neighborhood. So as I say, you know, there's activism as a job, and then there's activism as a passion in the life, so I'm sure we're going to keep working together and addressing housing issues in the city. Happy to have you as a constituent, and, well, we already literally signed it, but I'll sign on to this as well. Thank you.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep this brief, because I have very little voice tonight. Nicole, congratulations. I just want to say, you know, we met during COVID, as you know, on the Immigrant Services Unit, and I didn't realize you had just moved to Somerville, because the depth of your knowledge about the city, the depth of your passion and commitment and engagement with the residents was beyond, I think, expectations. So thank you for your hard work, and I wish you well in your next adventure.
Thank you so much, Judy. Get better soon.
Counselor Said.
Yeah, I will say, Nicole, thank you for your hard work, and I would add that you inspired many in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, counselor.
I don't want to be too grandiose, but I think that you are a historical figure in Somerville. I think there is a long line of community activists and leaders who have done the sort of work that you've done, and you've stepped into that tradition just with unbelievable skill and tenacity and poise, and I am so deeply thankful. You've served as a link between just thousands and thousands of residents who are getting screwed over by their landlords, who are seeing rent increases, who are scared, who don't know what to do, serving as a link between those folks and all of us, who are trying to come up with policies that will make a difference in those lives. And you're able to speak both languages, both literally and figuratively. And all of us in government know that we can count on you to be real with us and to show up on task forces, on commissions, and also to honestly represent what is going on in this community, which is not always pretty and is really, really difficult. So the community is just extremely lucky to have had you as their kind of representative and liaison and champion for these years, and I know that they will continue to do so. So thank you for everything. Counselor Wilson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. Nicole, first of all, yes to everything everyone has said here. I first met you in 2021, when CAS was doing candidate forums. I was immediately impressed with you and what you were doing, and you haven't disappointed here in terms of, like, working with you, you know, in this role. All I will say is, it's a very slanted playing field in terms of rights between landlords and tenants, and I feel like you did a lot of work to level that playing field to the degree that is possible here in Somerville, and I just really appreciate you and everything you did on that front. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jake. Thank you, counselor.
With that, this order is approved. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you all so much. This is an honor.
Let the record show Counselor Scott has joined us remotely, and the representative from Extonet is here, so we're going to take up item 3.1 off the table and reopen that public hearing.
I have Matthew Preco.
Mr. Preco.
Hello.
Welcome.
Are you hearing me all right?
Yes.
Hi, I apologize. I am the Extonet representative for item 3.1. We are looking for a grant of location to lay conduit from utility pole 358/66, as mentioned, pretty much across the street, about 50 feet, to utility pole 358/66A. And we ask that you approve this petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on that item?
No.
All right, are there any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the ward counselor, I've reviewed the application. Everything mostly looks in order. I would just ask that they ship this about 100 feet down the road and do it in Cambridge. Just kidding. It looks great. Recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no discussion, that grant of location is approved.
And the next item that will be taken out of order is item 4.3, A Resolution by Counselors Wilson and Klingon Opposing Private Jet Hanger Expansion at Hanscom Civil Airport and Regionwide.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Counselor Klingon and I were approached by Mothers Out Front about this council approving a resolution opposing the expansion of Hanscom Civil Airport's private jet facilities. As you hopefully read in the fact sheet attached to this item, private jet emissions are a major contributor to our planet's climate crisis and poor air quality, and it's not just Taylor Swift responsible for this. I believe that stopping the expansion of private jet flights in and out of the area is one way that we can think globally and act locally, and that's why I'm happy to co-sponsor this resolution with Counselor Klingon. I'd like to sponsor Lindsey Luke of Mothers Out Front now to address the council.
Ms. Luke, welcome.
Thank you. This is my first time appearing here. This is very exciting for me. Mothers Out Front is committed to doing what we can to preserve a livable planet for our children and their children, and doing it in a way that is as fair as possible. I want to thank all of you for your incredible public service, because I strongly suspect that the jobs that you do here have somewhat more tedium and somewhat more frustration than the average job. So I really appreciate your public service. Part of the challenge must be the uncertainty. It's hard to know whether you're doing the right thing. It's hard to know whether you're doing the best thing. There are always competing priorities. Who knows whether passing this resolution will make any difference or not? But I am committed to the idea that having as many people make as much noise as possible about getting carbon pollution stopped or getting it out of our atmosphere, while that's a pipe dream, but that would be nice, is a very important thing to raise each and every voice about. So I thank you very much for taking this on, and I hope to be standing up here in a couple minutes to thank you for passing the resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Klingon, and then Counselor Scott. Oh, sorry. Counselor Wilson, are you sponsoring two speakers?
I wasn't aware of that, but I would be happy to. Were you looking to speak on this?
All right. All right, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, you know, I'm glad that Ms. Luke, Lindsey, brought this to our attention. You know, I've been out in those areas. I see a lot of yard signs regarding this expansion. I think it's harmful to the area in a number of ways, but for me, it just seemed like a no-brainer in the sense that, you know, with the proliferation of private jet availability and, you know, the growing number of wealthy people that have moved to our state, you know, the idea that 40% of these flights go to Martha's Vineyard, and we have commercial flights that are just another 20, 15, 20 minutes down the road out of Logan that go to, Cape Air goes to Martha's Vineyard and Antucket. So for me, you know, the idea that we would expend that much fuel just to go that little bit for people who don't want to ride with the unwashed masses on the ferry or the plane just seems like a little too much, you know, extravagance for me. So I'm happy to support this and support the people of Bedford and the birds and everything else that'll be destroyed out there with this expansion.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for bringing this resolution. You know, one of the little-known facts, I actually have my private pilot's license, and I've flown in and out of Bedford a number of times, certainly not on jets, just little single-prop airplanes, but I'm a huge fan of civil aviation. I think it has an important role, and the number of small civil private airstrips continues to dwindle. Hanscom has an important role in the area as being basically the only towered airport other than Logan, but one piece of it, and so it's an important resource for private aviation of all kinds. One thing that I think people maybe miss is that one of the reasons driving this expansion at Hanscom is the incredibly high cost of flying in and out of Boston Logan. Boston Logan is an intensely crowded piece of airspace. They're not making any more real estate around that airport anytime soon, and the costs for these private jets to fly into the area are just overwhelming for them to come into Boston Logan. So it's no surprise to me that they'd like a closer alternative than Manchester or Worcester able to accommodate those loads. That said, that is not our problem, and, you know, catering to the private jet travel needs of the millionaire class is not worth, to me, the ecological impacts. Making it more affordable for people to jet in from God knows where and make a stop on their way to Martha's Vineyard certainly isn't, I think, in the best interest from a revenue standpoint for Bedford or from an ecological standpoint for any of us. So I really appreciate this, and I want, I support it wholeheartedly, but I want to emphasize for everybody who says we need this capacity in the area, there are regional airports not far away that are more than capable of servicing these private flights at just perhaps a little bit more inconvenience or a higher cost. So given that that is surfacing the shared commons cost that we all suffer from the increased air traffic and increased pollution, I'm inclined to not let us, not support offloading that onto one of our neighboring communities. So thank you for your patience on this, Mr. President, but I've got a lot to say about this, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Back for round two, I just wanted to, I spoke to Mr. Wool here and wanted to make the point, we already have Interstate 93 running through our city. We're an environmental justice community here. We don't need more flights over our city.
I'll just add, I'm extremely grateful that you all brought this. Obviously, the private jet emissions are the main climate thing that we're talking about tonight. Another thing that I know many of us are aware, this airport is right next to incredibly important bird habitat, which is very important to me as our council's resident bird nerd. I learned about this area because during the pandemic, they closed Mount Auburn Cemetery, which is the number-one spot for migratory birds, and so everyone was scurrying around. And I learned there, the blue-winged warbler, they nest right next to Hanscom Airfield, and it's one of the only places in the area that you can see them, and it's just an amazing, amazing habitat. And in addition to the jet fuel, the idea of further encroaching on that is just completely unacceptable. So thank you all for bringing this. I'm happy to support it. Seeing no further discussion, that resolution is approved. Thank you for being here.
And the next item we'll take out of order is item 5.1, An Order by Counselors Said, Burnley, and Wilson, That the Director of Economic Development Take the Steps Described Within Relative to the Armory Building.
Counselor Said.
I would like to sponsor Stephanie Scherf, co-director and CEO of the Center for Arts at the Armory.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Stephanie Scherf. I'm a co-director and CEO at the Center for Arts at the Armory. And let's see, I just want to thank the city council for your support. Myself and our co-director and COO, Jess White, as well as some of the members of our board, have individually met with some of the, well, all of the at-large counselors, as well as Counselor Ewan Campan, as well as Counselor Said. So I think, and beyond that, I think I've either spoken with or met with all of the counselors except for Counselor Klingon. or met with all of the councilors except for Counselor Klingon and Counselor Davis. So I welcome you to come over to the Armory. We can have some coffee at the café and chat. Also, just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Wilson for your nuanced understanding of the Warming Center and your recent blog post. I read that, so thank you so much for that. Also, thank you, Counselor Said, for sponsoring me to speak tonight. I'm just going to give the briefest of overviews and snapshots of our nonprofit arts organization, the Center for Arts at the Armory. We have seven full-time staff members. We have 21 part-time staff members. We have dozens of volunteers. We have five directors of our board. We serve 250,000 people per year. We do about 750 events each year. We have five signature programs, including the Spotlight Series, the Performance Opportunity Program, Feet Keep the Beat Festival, our rooted café visual arts exhibitions, and also the Somerville Winter Farmers Market, which we host and manage from November through April. So forgive me, I'm going to read some of my prepared comments tonight, but I just want to do this out of respect for everybody's time. So Counselor Said put in an order that has three points, so I'm just going to touch briefly on those three points. The first point is really focused on releasing a request to release a detailed inventory of spaces in the Armory Building. And ultimately, this is really related to getting the Armory Master Plan process moving, expedited, and finalized. Because right now, I would say it's stuck and it's stalled, and that's really negatively impacting our organization and our community. I do want to share that in January, we started our first in what will be a series of monthly meetings with Rachel Nedkarny and Ted Fields from OSPCD, and Greg Jenkins and Michael Rosenberg from the Arts Council. So in some ways, I think this was an outcome of one of former Councilor Gomez Muakad's orders, and I think it's really positive that we're talking to each other. So in January, the Arts Council and OSPCD announced four community meetings about the Armory Master Plan to take place between January and April. So so far, there has been one community meeting, and in our opinion, it was not super productive or well-attended. And these community meetings seem to be further stalling and delaying the finalization of the Armory Master Plan. So this week, I sent the Arts Council, basically the four people that we're meeting with in the Arts Council and OSPCD, an email with some detailed suggestions about considering instead sending the community an electronic survey by which they could collect more compilable and actionable data. The community also needs more detailed information to respond to, like the inventory of spaces in the Armory, and other information about other spaces and models similar to the Armory to compare and contrast with. For example, to say, oh, I like this about this model, like, for example, the Multicultural Arts Center of Cambridge, but I don't like this over at the Zeitarian in New Bedford. Or, and what are things that we could see working well here in Somerville? We really do need to move from the conceptual questions of like, what is the Armory to you, to more technical questions that are going to lead to an RFP process and a governance model for the building. So this June will be three years of city ownership. And what I would call the glacial pace of this process is really negatively impacting our organization and our community. So we're advocating that the master plan process be transparent and well-administered. And so as I stated in my recent email to colleagues in the Arts Council and OSPCD, I really don't think that their own staff are the best equipped or the most objective groups to be running the Armory Master Plan process, especially considering that they have a large stake in potentially operating the spaces as the owner. So I did ask recently about the role of the consultant that was hired, Create today, and I was told that they're doing research. So since August, we, along with the 1,100-plus people who signed our petition, as well as many others who didn't have the chance to sign the petition, have been advocating for the following and will continue to do so. And also, just to quickly recap, I was here speaking to the council in September and then also participated in a Housing and Community Development meeting in September as well. And so now I understand that at the end of the year, things have to be kind of brought back to the council. So we're in the process of doing that right now. So anyway, the four items that we are advocating for are to, one, to abandon the proposed Model 1 for the Armory Building, which would put the city as the owner and operator and programmer of the building, which would force the current tenants out. Number two would be to adopt a third-party operator model for the Armory Building that would include developing and issuing an RFP that third-party operators interested in managing the building would respond to. So number three would be to develop and issue an RFP for prospective arts and culture tenants interested in securing a lease on a space inside the Armory Building. And number four is to work with a consultant contracted by the city and current Armory tenants to work, to create a governance model and governance committee that would develop, issue, and respond to both of the RFPs that I just mentioned. So I just wanted to move to points two and three in the order that Counselor Said put forward that was also co-sponsored by Counselor Wilson and Counselor Burnley. So this is connected to our lease and also the increase on our rent. So once again, as happened last year, we are eight months into our current fiscal year without a lease. That really needs to be resolved immediately. Without a lease, we cannot apply for a loan if we need one, and also, we cannot apply for certain grant opportunities. It is also difficult to enter into contractual relationships for events taking place two to three years down the road without a lease. We also want the doubling of our rent to be absolved. And for the record, if you see anywhere that we are in, quote, "arrears," that is only because we have refused to pay this doubling of rent. We are continuing to pay the amount of rent that we agreed to when the city took ownership of the building. But to be really honest, I don't really sometimes understand why we're paying rent at all in a building that we are largely running and providing a civic service through making our space available for a very diverse range of programming and uses, often for free and/or at highly subsidized rates, and liaising constantly with DPW and now helping out with the city's Warming Center. I didn't mention in my beginning little snapshot, we do operate, I think, as most of you know, the Performance Hall and the café, and we have a small room in the basement, B5. And so we are considered the building's anchor tenant. So I just wanted to say a few brief words also about the Warming Center. And Counselor Strezzo's orders that have now been sent to committee are related in part to the Warming Center. And so we'll continue that discussion on February 28th. But just wanted to take an opportunity to speak to the full council about the Warming Center. So the building, as we know, the Armory, was taken for a declared arts use in June of 2001. This is what Somerville residents were told. The current Warming Center use is in violation of city zoning in the Fab District, and also, it's in violation of the ZBA special permit. So we've been through a lot in the two and a half or so years of city ownership, and the city's activation of a Warming Center in the building for three months with no preparation or communication is really the most recent blow. While we agree that having a Warming Center is extremely important, the decision to activate the current Warming Center at the Armory, which as a building does not have the right characteristics for a Warming Center, is having a negative impact on our organization and our community and on other tenants who I can't speak on behalf of tonight, but not to mention the Warming Center clients themselves. So if you've ever been to the Armory basement, you know that it's a very cavernous space with all sorts of areas and alcoves where someone could hang out for days or weeks really undetected. There's a lot of other things that I won't go into. But similar to the rationale of not having Warming Centers in school gyms, the Warming Center population and youth under 18 should not be made to occupy the same public space in close quarters like the Armory hallway, common areas, and basement areas, including two public bathrooms. So as soon as the city announced their idea of a Warming Center in the Armory, we sent a detailed email on December 15th asking questions that still have not been answered to this day. Two weeks into the activation of the Warming Center, we received an email from Rachel Nedkarny, which provided policies and procedures related to the Warming Center. The administration instituted public hours on the building, and there is now a security presence in the front hallway of the building, something that should have been there really from day one. So this has improved the situation, and we're grateful for the security presence, but there's still many challenges. Three weeks into the new policies and procedures, there's still many questions, and things often do not go according to procedure in terms of when the building gets locked, et cetera. And the security company that was hired has been suboptimal. One day, the guard abandoned her post at 4:00 PM without a replacement, and this week, she asked our staff person to drive her to Boston Medical Center because she was having a medical emergency. So related to imposing public hours on the building of Monday through Friday, 12 to 8, and Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM or 6:00 PM, I've learned since January 8th, when the city activated the Warming Center and really just dropped the city's need for a Warming Center in our lap, what I learned is that homelessness is not something that takes place during public hours. It takes place 24/7. So no thought or planning was given to how the Warming Center interacts with the ecosystem of the Armory, both inside the building and outside the building, again, 24/7. Furthermore, a Warming Center was installed in a public building where there are no city staff present. So while we've been given various phone numbers to call, it's often not clear who we should call or what we should do in specific situations that I'm not going to detail now. Sometimes, we don't know what else to do but contact city staff who are in offices and homes throughout Somerville and greater Boston to respond to emergency issues. So compounding the issue is that the city put a Warming Center into a building that city administration doesn't know how to manage yet. There are no pre-established protocols or procedures, except those that have been put in place for years by individual tenants like us. That is why situations are compounding and spiraling, and we are the ones to feel the impact. This afternoon, Jess and I had a phone conversation with Nikki Spencer and Rachel Nedkarny, who told us that we should be receiving a building code of conduct this weekend. So I just want to give you a few examples of what we're facing. We have weekends coming up this month with back-to-back weddings. We have a sliding scale model, so private rentals allow us to do our community-facing work. So we had to contact the wedding celebrants and let them know that there's a Warming Center now in the building, and hoping that they wouldn't cancel or write us a bad review. We had to hire additional security, and we'll be crossing our fingers that all goes off without an incident. We did have to institute a clause in our contracts that minors should not be allowed out of the Performance Hall unaccompanied. There was a Warming Center client who had been harassing our staff and patrons. No one informed us that he had been banned from the Warming Center, and we are still waiting to be told how to respond when he shows up in a building that he knows he has the right to be in because it's public. Our café staff are literally hiding behind the Performance Hall door because they're afraid of this person, and they don't want to be harassed. So we're losing staff, customers, and business because of this. There is security inside the building, but often fights and yelling break out in the driveway leading to the parking lot. This is where our patrons and our staff walk to get to their cars late at night. Last weekend, we did not know what to do or who to call when a van dropped off someone who was rolling on the Armory hallway floor and screaming scripture while we had a quiet acoustic guitar show in the Performance Hall going on with 200 people. The Warming Center's first response was that the beds were full, and they couldn't accommodate him. So I am imploring the council and the administration to please start planning now for next year so that the same mistakes are not repeated and so that all of our communities can be safe and served with dignity and respect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we received an update from the administration via email earlier this week, and I know that they're prepared to appear at an upcoming committee meeting to discuss this. Are there any comments tonight from councilors? All right. So thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. We'll mark that item complete. Or that item will be sent to Housing and Community Development.
And the next item being taken out of order is item 10.6, which is an order by Counselor Burnley and Counselor Mbah that the Director of Health and Human Services work with the administration to allocate funding to secure COVID-19 rapid tests to be distributed at public libraries.
Excellent. And I'd also like to read a related order from Counselor Strezzo, 10.11, please.
Item 10.11 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Director of Health and Human Services discuss the availability of free, city-funded COVID tests going forward after temporary relief funds have evaporated, including any plans and/or consideration of potential sources of COVID testing supplies provided through community partners.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld would like to sign on. I'd like to sign on to both. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I'll try to be very brief because I know we have a lot of folks in the audience tonight who are waiting for their own joyous occasion. We are currently in the highest surge of COVID in the last two years. Since the term Omicron was brand-new and no one knew what it was, this has been something that has rocked our community, I would say. I will say anecdotally, I know many people who've gotten COVID for the first time. I know many people who've gotten COVID for the fifth time because the transmission of this disease makes you more susceptible to getting it again. At least, that is what seems to be the case from data. And we, as many of my colleagues know, we've received a number of emails in the last few days from residents who have felt abandoned by their city because they've heard that a funding stream has dried up from the state, and therefore, we, as a municipality, have chosen not to provide more free rapid tests at our local libraries or free masks. And I just, I personally just believe this is an abdication of our own duty to ensure the public health of our residents. Even if our federal government would like to pretend that COVID-19 is over, even if our state government has decided they're not getting any federal funds, and therefore, they shouldn't have to provide the resources necessary to keep our community safe, it is on us as local officials to do everything in our power, politically and financially, to make sure that our residents are safe. And COVID is a health issue. It is an issue of disability justice because we've heard from many immunocompromised residents that this resource in our public libraries has been a life-saving one for them. And the putting the burden back on them, the financial burden, the physical burden, to go find and procure these tests that are getting more and more difficult to find as the surge increases, is unacceptable. I spoke with a resident today who said, in the last two weeks, she spent $75 trying to purchasing these tests. At a time where unaffordability is causing many residents to leave our community, I think it's on us to try to do as much as we can to make sure that they feel settled and safe in Somerville. And to illustrate that point, I would like to sponsor Margaret Hughes to speak about her experience. Thank you.
Welcome. Please.
Hi. Does this work? Great. Hi, my name is Margaret Hughes. I live at 42 Raymond Ave, near Teal Square. And I'm speaking in support of Counselor Burnley's policy order to fund free COVID tests and masks at the libraries and city hall for residents. And first of all, I just want to thank Counselor Burnley for bringing this issue to the City Council, but also all the councilors that I had the opportunity to speak to on the phone for your great support of this. I'm one of the residents who has been going to West Branch Library to pick up COVID tests over the last couple of years. And about a week and a half ago, I went to go grab my book and pick up a test. And it was kind of a gut punch to be told that the city had discontinued this service. The first thing I did was call City Hall, and I was told that because the federal government has declared the pandemic to be over as of May, that there's no more state provision of these supplies. Putting aside the fact that we're in the second-largest surge of the entire pandemic, I've had COVID five times in the last year. That means I've spent about two months of my life over the last year in quarantine in my apartment, sick. And it's not because I haven't been, like, taking precautions. It's not because I was high-risk. I just got unlucky, and I got COVID once. And as you know, one of the things it does is it weakens your immune system, and it makes you get sick over and over again if you're one of the unlucky people. So... It's not over for Somerville's disabled and chronically ill residents. And unfortunately, it's not over for all of the people in Somerville who are going to keep getting COVID and, and maybe even those disabling after-effects if these pandemic protections keep disappearing. So I rely on those, those free tests and masks just to live my life. I know I'm, I'm not the only one. And I'm on MassHealth, so my insurance covers two tests per month. That's not enough to live my life, but I'm, I'm able to afford to supplement that when I, when I need to. Not everyone can. And actually, when I, when I spoke on the phone with Councilmember Wilson, one of the things he pointed out is more and more insurance companies aren't even covering any of these pandemic preventive health measures, and it's increasingly a question of to prevent, you know, to protect ourselves and each other from this disabling disease. Can you, can you afford to pay? How much can you afford to pay? And the, the service provided by the libraries and by City Hall filled this gap in such an important and, and necessary way. It was really wonderful, and it made me really grateful to live in Somerville. There are, there are a lot of things I would love for Somerville to do to make this city safer and healthier and more welcoming for all of us during this ongoing pandemic. I wish that there were still universal masking requirements in, in schools and in businesses so that I don't have to risk further disablement if I want to, like, buy my groceries. I, I wish that it was still, you know, easier to find reduced cost or free PCR tests in this city which are more accurate than those, those rapid tests that we can get. But this is, this is a really, you know, simple and popular, I think, way to, to support our community during this ongoing pandemic is, is bringing back these free N95s and rapid tests at the libraries and City Hall. And so I'm, I'm asking for your help in, in doing this. I'm, as I said, really grateful to live in Somerville and, and to know that this is a, a realm in which the city council and the city can, can step up and have the back of, of its disabled and immunocompromised residents and residents and all of us who are, who are living through this together. So thank you so much to all the council members that I spoke with who are working to, to support this, this important measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Strezzo?
And I wanted to talk about my addition to the order because we need to discuss a secondary plan that if the evaporated ARPA funds that covered the masks and the COVID testing supplies is, is not, if the city is not taking up that money, I wish to discuss how we can perhaps collaborate with community partners such as our hospital systems. Can they, can they donate supplies to help the city? Can they step up the community as well? That as a community, it's a joint effort of all of us. And if it is not on municipal funds, can we find another solution? There's always a Plan B.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I think everybody knows I missed the inauguration because I had COVID. We had a super-spreader Christmas, it turned out. The tests alone for my family of four, to just, you know, starting with, you know, onset of symptoms through, like, getting cleared to go reintegrate back into the, into the public, I went back and totaled up, we spent $270 on tests for one, basically for two weeks. And that's a ridiculous amount of money, and that could, that could wreck a family having to pay for that. So people are left with the choice of, of testing and knowing or just not knowing. And yeah, I, I would love to see us do everything in our power to try to get some, some tests to the community like that because that's a lot of money to pay for testing.
Thank you all. Seeing no further discussion, Councilor Burnley?
Thank you. Can the clerk just amend this order slightly to add after rapid tests and free masks? Because I...
The clerk can, but the council can.
Well, can the council? I motioned that the council, I moved to amend the order so that, to add free masks after that rap, tests.
Any discussion on that? We need a roll call for the amendment? No, that's amended. Would colleagues like this to go to committee? All right, let's send this to Public Health and Public Safety. Yeah?
Both of them?
Yes. Both of those items are referred to the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety.
And that will bring us to item 6A, a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on January 31st, 2024.
Councilor Paneda Newfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, bear with me, I don't have COVID. I've been tested multiple times, just another daycare virus. So the committee met on Wednesday, January 31st at 7:00 for 2 hours and 33 minutes. All members were present. We took up quite a few confirmations before we started our, our confirmation process. We had a discussion first with the city solicitor and the assistant city solicitor. As the beginning of the year, the sort of new term, new committee, I wanted to bring them forward to have a conversation with the committee on sort of a re-introduction and re-overview of the civil service appointment process. And in particular, we heard from the office about what's changed since Fairchild and Kylie decisions for our committee. So that was a really important conversation, kind of setting the groundwork and foundation for our work moving forward. We asked, I asked specifically for guidance on specific questions that we've asked candidates before, just so that we are, we fall within the guidelines of, of what our, our committee can and can't ask. We also talked about reasons we could enter executive session and opened, of course, up for the committee to ask questions of our city solicitor. So that was the first item we marked were complete. Our first interview was with Austin Brower to the Board of Election Commissioners, who is a Ward 7 resident interested in, in keeping communication with the public in elections open and improve recruitment of election workers. That item was approved for yes and one absent. We then moved on to confirmation of the promotion of Captain Mark Matthews, who I know is in the audience tonight, to the position of Fire District Chief. Captain Matthews has been a firefighter with Somerville since 2001. He's then moved on to be lieutenant and then captain since 2014, and has a long history, of course, in Somerville in particular, working out of the fire station in Ward 7 in Teal Square. So we had a discussion with Captain Matthews about the development at Assembly and Point Yards, how it affects fire operations, how to make sure we can continue training for high-rise fire prevention and response. And then I asked specifically about the repairs to Teal Square Station and kind of his role and leadership in that. That item was approved with four yes and one absent. We moved on to interviewing several police, potential police officers for the role of police officer. So first was confirmation of the appointment of Matthew Larizio to the position of police My colleagues asked great questions of, of Mr. Larizio, and that item was approved for yes and one no. We placed the appointment of Guy Larranapierre on file. Mr. Pierre is not moving forward with the process, so that was approved for yes, one absent. We then spoke with Igor Benicourt, who we, for the confirmation of the appointment of police officer, and noted that he can speak both Spanish and Portuguese, which we knew was an asset to the department. My colleagues asked great questions of Mr. Benicourt, and that was approved for yes, one no. Moved on to the confirmation of the appointment of Brian Clancy to the position of police Similar, we asked similar questions of the candidates about handling difficult interactions and, and what they're most looking forward to in the role. That item was approved for yes, one no. We placed on file the appointment, confirmation of the appointment of John Tavinius to the position of police officer, which was for yes, one absent vote, as that person sat moving forward. And then there's four items to be discharged from the committee tonight. Three constables that have been constables for decades, and we have spoken to them extensively in the past, and then one member, Lori Brandt, to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. I'm hoping we can take them up tonight for approval by the full council. So with that, I hope this committee report be accepted as amended.
Excellent. Any discussion on the committee report? Seeing none, do we roll call that now?
On the Report of the Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters Committee of January 31st, 2024, Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes. Yeah, yes?
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Perfect. Councilor Mbah?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Paneda Newfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that committee report is approved, and that puts four items before the council that were discharged with no recommendation.
Do we have to take them separately?
You do not.
Does anyone wish to take them separately? Okay, on those four items.
You want to read them?
Certainly.
The four items are items 23-1767, confirmation of the appointment of Lori Brandt to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities; item 23-1787, confirmation of the reappointment of Darcy Haynes as Constable; 23-1788, confirmation of the reappointment of Alan Bishop as Constable; and 23-1838, confirmation of the reappointment of Mary Battinelli as Constable.
On those items?
On those items. Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Paneda Newfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those items are approved.
Excellent.
And we're going to do the oath of office for the Fire District Chief.
Chief Rehn, welcome.
Come on up. Welcome. We'll let the crowd filter in here for a sec. All right. And I'm going to have you raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly affirm that you will faithfully perform the duties incumbent on you as District Chief for the Somerville Fire Department, City of Somerville, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Then you'll sign a statement to that effect right here. It's this very thinly dotted line right there. Sorry.
Folks, we'll take a five-minute recess if you want to take photos.
...
...
All right, folks, we're back. We've got to do a roll call for quorum.
This is roll call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
With ten counselors present and one absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Next item, please.
The next item is going to be Item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting approval of a home rule petition to authorize the continued employment of Acting Somerville Police Chief Charles J. Femenow.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration brought this to my attention with a request that we consider it this evening rather than send it to committee. This is something that will be familiar to most of you because we've had the same process a few times before. As we all know, the process for seeking a full-time chief remains ongoing. And Chief Femenow has agreed to continue in his role. But there are some... The prior permission from the state to allow him to continue has expired or is quickly expiring. And so this is just us saying, yep, we're cool with him continuing on while we continue to find a full-time chief. And there is some time sensitivity, and that's why we wanted to do it.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to publicly thank Chief Femenow for his willingness to come back to Somerville and do this job in a time of need for us. And to thank him for his patience as we go about naming the new permanent chief. I will say I hope Beacon Hill shares the chief's patience because I'm sure they're getting tired of approving these home rule petitions from us about this.
Well, if we don't approve this, our charter says the city council president becomes the chief of police. So that's the choice, folks. Just kidding. On the item. Counselor McLaughlin.
I can't believe... I'm struggling to be the one to say this, Mr. President. I kind of thought this was going to go to committee, to be honest, because this is the... I forget how many times this home rule petition has come up. And the mayor's office recently rejected three candidates for the chief of police after a years-long search. So I kind of have questions, like, and I don't know. Like, I don't want to disrespect the only person willing to do this job in the city. But this is the... I don't know. Am I the only one who feels this way? I'm kind of surprised that we're moving forward this quickly on it.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through you, I agree with Counselor McLaughlin. Okay, I was waiting for a gasp or something. Yeah, I was not surprised to see this item because I've seen it before. And I don't even remember, quite frankly, how many times I've seen this item. It's kind of shocking to me that we've extended this period this long. And this is not a statement on Chief Femenow at all. It's not a reflection of his capacity to do the job or his ability thus far. But I have gotten questions from residents who have said, hey, we did this whole police chief search. And then I didn't hear what happened with that. I didn't hear why no one was chosen. And I have to tell them, I didn't hear why either. Which puts me in a tough position as a counselor when residents have questions and our processes are so opaque and non-transparent, same thing, that I can't really provide them with adequate... an adequate response. So I would really like to know how the search is going. I mean, it's starting over, so what the timeline is there? How we are moving forward in a way that is permanent and not just a repeated attempt at us asking the state for more leniency on this. So I would be comfortable with this going to committee so that that discussion could actually happen. But those are just my thoughts and feelings.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I guess I just have a couple of questions for the administration, if anybody's here. Like, the first question would be, when does his current thing run out? Like, you know, when do we have to renew it by? Obviously, there's a process at the State House. I mean, it sounds like the timeline, from what I'm hearing through back channels, that's a pretty aggressive timeline for the new police chief search. So I don't even know if this is even going to be a factor. So I'm just curious, before we embarrass ourselves again and send this up to Beacon Hill, I think... Because I think that I've heard rumblings that, you know, they're just really confused as to why we're asking again for this chief to be... I don't know if anybody's here to answer those questions.
Our first meeting for our new legislative liaison, Kimberly, to answer the questions around the time sensitivity, why this is being sought. Please.
Hello. Thank you, Council President, and through you to the members. Thanks for having me and my first meeting before you as the legislative liaison and for taking this item out of order. Thank you. I might need you to repeat your question, Counselor, but there were a few that I heard. One was when the current term expires. I think Chief Femenow's birthday is June 1, so that is the timeline, when his current authorization would expire. And this home rule petition would expand that for an additional year. There are still, in terms of our current search process, the application is open and will be closing on March 1. And from there, the, you know, evaluation process will begin, or, you know, the whole process will ensue. The selection committee, the search committee, is working on finalizing the exact dates of all of those stages in accordance with the ordinance. But we expect that it's a good faith effort that, you know, the search process will continue in hopes of finding a chief police, a chief of police. But the deadline is very close because of the June 1 birthday. So this is more a ability to make space for potential negotiations or if a candidate is selected and needs time to transition or relocate, that there is ample time between the official hiring and start date and the end of Chief Femenow's acting time.
So I just have a follow-up on that point.
Yes.
Typically, if counselors want something, go to committee. That's what we do. Is there a reason that... a time reason that this can't go to committee?
If the counselors would like us to go to committee, it can. We are asking for immediate approval in order to make time for an expeditions approval through our state delegation as well. They have requested ample time to do that, given whatever timelines they are under. And so we would prefer it to be immediately approved.
Okay. Counselor Klingon.
Mr. President, that's pretty much all I have, except I would ask, would this be going to appointments and confirmations as a committee, if it did go to committee? And, you know, two weeks, we'd be having another meeting two weeks from now. Would that be enough time to have a...
Typically, home rule petitions would go to legislative matters.
Legislative matters, right. That's okay. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, we've heard from two colleagues that they'd like it to go to committee. My own opinion is I'm not going to hear anything in committee that's going to change my opinion on this. If we want there to be more public discussion about the state of the chief search as it relates to this, I guess that's the question before the council.
Can I... Mr. President, can I speak on the timeline and just send it to committee? Actually, that was my comment. I agree. I think if we want to have a discussion about the process and the questions I think many of us have, we should put it in a separate order. I spoke to a member of our state delegation. I'm sorry, guys. I'm trying really hard. I spoke to a member of our state delegation very recently, and they are as concerned and frustrated about making sure this gets through in time. As you all know, the state process is slow, and they are going to have to work hard to get this passed. And I think we should honor their request to have as much time as possible to get this through in addition to everything else that they're working on, as you know, it's budget season, the State House. So that... I'm just sharing a little bit of background as to probably why this came in front of us with this level of urgency. And I don't think we should confuse it with the questions that we have about the process. We should focus on this particular item and move forward with it. That's my request.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson and then Counselor Scott has a comment.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. As the council's rep on the police chief search selection committee, if you ever... if anyone has questions about what's happening there, like, please reach out to me. I'm happy to talk to folks about that.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank my colleague at large for that offer of a briefing. But, you know, a briefing to a fellow counselor is not the same as having a conversation in the public room about what's happening here. It has been largely a dark process. So I think it does merit discussion at the city council level and potentially at our next meeting. Similar to you, my vote on this is not going to change based on the information we have because we are left with either having somebody who is well past retirement date at this point or having no chief at all. And that is a clearly unacceptable situation. But there are multiple failures at play here that have led us once again to this juncture. And I think it... I both think that it is... The slow pace of the State House is not our problem. Our responsibility is to our constituents. And it makes me wonder what other piece of leverage we could have to force a public conversation about this topic. So, you know, that is my thinking on it. I am happy to approve this. I have no beef with our current chief. Chief Femenow's been very good to work with. But I do have grave concerns about what it is we are doing here from a management standpoint with regards to this police chief search. So at the will of the president, what you'd like to do with this item tonight, I just want to, once again, express my strong concern about this. And if we are to approve it tonight, I would like to do so with some commitment from mayor staff that we are going to have an honest, thorough, and full public discussion about it at some point. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would say to refer it to committee. I'm not on the legislative matters committee. So I defer to my colleagues on that committee for this. And I want to be clear that this isn't about the individual, to me. This is about this very strange and drawn-out process that has netted us in the situation. As Counselor Scott said, we're in this situation for a reason. And I just, when I saw the item on the agenda, I thought, well, this is clearly going to committee. And I also have spoken to members from our state delegation. And I don't want to put words in their mouth, but when I spoke to them, the issue seemed to be whether this will get approved at the State House at all, not the timeline. Because this is... I forget how many times we've sent this home rule petition up, and we've had an interim chief of four years. So those are my questions and concerns that I don't think can be answered tonight. They may not be answered in committee, but that's just... I just had to flag it before we move forward with just a very fast vote on something that has been pressing for many years.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate the discussion here, and I agree with the good counsel from Ward 7 that... I agree with everyone who's expressed a desire to understand the rationale, the reasoning behind this ongoing process. To be frank, I don't think we're going to hear any actual answer there. I think for a variety of reasons, we've heard from the administration, is, you know, it's some of the timing sensitivity of this item. And I think if there is a discussion to be had, it's not really something that's the purview of legislative matters other than as it relates to this, you know, tangential item. If, you know, if it was the desire for one of my colleagues to put it in a separate item, as the good counsel from Ward 7 suggested, it could go to Counselor Panetta Neufeld's Committee on Confirmation Personnel Matters, could go to Public Health and Public Safety, where, you know, that discussion might be, you know, more typical of the type of subject matter that is discussed. I'm happy to put the... We have a legislative matters meeting next Tuesday. I don't, as I said, I don't anticipate we'd hear much of anything different because I don't think there's much more to be said. I mean, we all know what happened and what's already been discussed here tonight. There was candidates put forward. They were rejected. We're starting again. I don't expect that we'll be... I anticipate that the Solicitor's Office would advise it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about particular issues with any certain candidate, certainly not an open meeting. And I don't... I suspect that we'll be told that that's not, you know, an appropriate topic in any circumstance. So I just, I don't see what we'd accomplish as it relates to this specific item by having a discussion on Tuesday on legislative matters. If we wanted to have a more appropriate discussion, one that the administration, you know, could prepare for and hopefully collect whatever information they can, and even if it's just to have... Raise all these questions again out loud and have the voices be heard and then repeated in a committee report down the road. I get that, and that sounds fine. But I would ask that this, again, that this be approved this evening because I don't see what we'll accomplish by pushing it to committee on Tuesday. It'll come back in two weeks, and we'll pass it then. And I think the only thing we will have accomplished is taking two weeks of time away from our state delegates... Our state representatives to get this thing passed, if they can.
All right, so my inclination is to move that the administration appear before the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety to update the city council on the status of the police chief search. And then to call the roll on this item so that we can have that discussion, which I completely agree is a valid and important discussion that is of public importance. It's obviously of importance to all of us in the council, while at the same time, I think, keeping these issues separate as I think they should be. I don't think we gain anything in that conversation from slowing this down. So that motion is approved.
Unless we want to lay it on the table for approval. Want to lay it on the table?
Yeah, let's lay it on the table for approval.
Okay, so Item 7.1 is still before the council.
Yes. Is there further discussion on the home rule petition? Counselor Strezzo.
End question. Roll call to approve, correct?
The home rule petition.
Correct.
This roll call, yes. Further discussion? Okay, let's call the roll.
On Item 24-0133, the home rule petition authorizing the continued employment of Acting Police Chief Femenow. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Nay.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With ten counselors in favor and one opposed, that item is approved. And I'll send it around for signature.
We don't enroll and ordain this?
No.
Thank you.
And with one more item being taken out of order is Item 10.12, a communication by Counselor Wilson in his capacity as Chair of the Committee on Finance outlining the process for this council to determine and convey its shared budget priorities for the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Hear ye, hear ye. Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, it's the actual most wonderful time of the year, shared budget priority season. I've spoken to all ten colleagues about this and explained the process as we were putting it together at the time. Many of you offered really excellent suggestions to improve the process. I was really grateful for that. A lot of those have been incorporated into the process. the process this year. So thank you to everyone who engaged and helped out with that brainstorming. I won't read the entire communication. Hopefully, you all did. Maybe you even looked at the attached slideshow. I do want to share a few key things. The administration requested that all our individual FY '25 budget party memos be submitted by the March 28 regular meeting. Due to the calendar, in order for our individual FY '25 budget parties to be considered as part of this council's FY '25 shared budget priorities process, those memos will need to be in before the preceding regular meeting, the one before that on Thursday, March 14. Some key new aspects of the process this year are going to include, there's going to be a real concerted effort to absolutely nail down the intent and categorization of your individual budget priorities ahead of putting together the ballot. Our legislative and policy analyst, Brendan Salisbury, and our new, brand-new, oh, I don't see him anymore. He was here. Brand-new finance analyst, Mohammed Adin, will be following up on your memos with each of you to ensure there's no confusion about anything. As a result, anyone who gets their individual FY '25 budget party memo in by our next meeting on February 22 will be making their lives and mine a whole lot easier. So if you can get them in by the next meeting, that's great. Otherwise, the one after is the hard deadline for those memos to be part of this process. Finance Committee, the whole meeting featuring a public hearing will happen on Tuesday, March 19 at 7:00 p.m. Like the budget public hearing this past June, this will be a virtual meeting with interpretation offered, as well as a location in the city for folks to show up in person and give their comments if they don't want to do that through a device of their own at home. At the in-person Finance Committee, the whole FY '25 shared budget priorities meeting on Tuesday, March 26, we're going to waive the rules of the council and adopt special rules for the evening that will make the process run more smoothly, while eliminating some of the past concerns the colleagues have had about making requests of counselors around when motions are being welcomed. And finally, rather than the chair having to decide on an appropriate number of resolutions to adopt, we're going to let the body decide democratically with discussion and votes on motions to adjourn once we hit five resolutions that evening. So if it's the will of the body to stay and take up more resolutions beyond that, we can vote to do that. Or if we've had enough and want to go home, we can vote to do that, too. From conversations with the administration, there's a strong preference for concepts over prescriptions in your individual FY '25 budget party memos. I don't disagree that this would help our shared budget priorities process, too. This is really an add-on to the individual memos to see if we can come together as a body and speak with one voice about our top priorities as a body. We've managed to do this in the past, so I'm optimistic that we're able to do this again next month. I'm always here if you have any questions or feedback. I'll be reaching out again to each of you in the coming weeks to go over the process in depth, answer your questions, and ensure you're ready for March 26. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. That item is approved. Placed on file.
And that will return us to the regular order of business. Item 4.1, an order by Counselor Ewan Campin, that the executive director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development update this council on current efforts to create a community center as part of the new developments in Union Square and Boynton Yards.
Thank you. I'd like to refer this item to the Housing and Community Development Committee. And just briefly, I'll say this is the second or maybe third time I've put in a similar item. The new developments in Union Square and Boynton Yards legally require the creation of new community space, and we don't have a plan for that. And the city very clearly needs to be involved in the planning process. We need to have dedicated staff that are thinking about this and working on the programming, what that's going to look like. There are community-led efforts that have kind of waxed and waned as activist energy has done that over the last several years. This needs to move forward. This needs to be a priority. So I look forward to continuing to discuss this. Counselor Strezzo would like to co-sponsor. Next item, please.
Item 4.2 is in order by counselors Wilson and Klingon, that the Director of Engineering update this council on the policy and plans pertaining to repairing leaking gas pipes versus replacing them and the necessary transition away from gas infrastructure.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Mothers Out Front have a subject matter expert on this. He was here earlier this evening. And he'd like to present to a committee about this. I'm told city staff and our utility partners have good policies in place on this. So if that's the case, taking this up would provide an opportunity for them to share that good story with the public. I would suggest that Public Utilities and Public Works makes sense as the committee to host that discussion. Thanks.
That item is referred to Public Utilities and Public Works. Counselor Klingon.
Mr. President, thank you. And thank you to Mothers Out Front and Counselor Wilson for co-sponsoring this. So one of the good things that came out of the work that we, Counselor Niedigang, had put in front of me as the chair of Public Utility Public Works was the dying trees on Somerville Ave and the potential for it being a gas leak. We did a lot of site visits with Eversource. And one of the things, one of the things that they were able to do was to reline this pipe with this robot instead of replacing the pipe, which would have, you know, caused all kinds, wreaked all kinds of havoc and so on and so forth. And, you know, I had been working with Mothers Out Front on that. And so, you know, this, this whole new era of robotics and being able to fix and reline these pipes and make them, you know, essentially not good as new, but almost, rather than replacing so that if, in fact, you know, when we do move towards moving away from gas altogether, it's, you know, not, it's more economically viable for the energy company for Eversource. So, you know, this is something that I think we can all agree that is much, it's a much smarter approach and a much less invasive approach. And for the future, in terms of getting, you know, switching over away from gas, it makes it much more likely that utility companies will be willing to do that if they haven't just replaced a bunch of pipes. So that said, as well as, you know, out of that work came, we were almost, we were almost selected for the, what's the, I always forget the term, but they did, they ended up selecting Framingham. It's for the heat pumps. What is it?
Demonstration.
Yeah, but for with a certain type of energy distribution rather than using...
Eversource.
Whatever. So, so, yeah, so a lot of, so we have a really good relationship with Eversource and all the utility companies. So I like this to go to committee, and we can have a discussion with them. And I'll, one positive note about the Somerville Ave there, I recently got an email from the arborist. And so Eversource is going to be paying for all of the trees. We just planted, I think, a dozen, 12 trees, which Eversource had agreed to replace as part of that whole project down there with the dying tree. So I'm happy to take this up in committee and work towards this, you know, goal that's certainly a suitable goal for us as a city moving forward.
That is good news about those trees. That item is referred to Public Works and Public Utilities.
Item 4.4 is in order by Counselor Klingon and Counselor Wilson, that the Director of Health and Human Services create an on-call emergency fire response unit to assist in connecting residents with available resources in the event of a displacement or a loss of property due to a fire.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld would like to sign on. Counselor Klingon.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. President, through you. So this, you know, comes out of, actually, I even think back to when Ian Adelman was living in Winter Hill before he moved to Maine. He was very big on sort of trying to have a community-based effort where, you know, you would, neighbors would know if there was needs next door of somebody who maybe had, you know, in the event of checking on a senior or so on. This is sort of in that same spirit, but it's, but I think what I'm trying to achieve here with this is that if we were able to have, this came out of the Pearl Street Fire and the fact that, you know, the Red Cross is great about, about getting out there. And, you know, I've been on this kick about, you know, when Doug Kress was the Director of Human Services, he lived in Somerville, he would be on the scene. I'm not saying that everyone can do that. Our current director lives in Gloucester. That's understandable. But there is a gap to be filled, and it happens, you know, on the scene and when the Red Cross leave, and even follow-up. So I don't know what this looks like, if it's, if it's Somerville current employees that live in the city that were able to put together sort of a team, that's kind of a response team, and maybe they get an extra stipend, or if this is empowering citizens to, you know, help in this situation. But there's a definite need and gap to be filled when it comes to fires. We've all talked about even just knowing about when fires are happening and the importance of that as counselors. And so how we respond, I think, you know, it really makes a difference in the lives of people who may not be able to, they don't know what they need on the scene that night. And so the next day, they may have questions, and there really isn't anywhere to turn. I think the city typically will just refer somebody to like a nonprofit, you know, Summer Homeless Coalition and so on, when we could, in fact, do just a couple little things to be able to help. So I'd like this to go to Public Health and Public Safety and sort of just have a discussion around, you know, the city forming this unit or whatever you want to call it, this civilian response. I'm just kidding. You know, something along those lines, I think, is really important to have in place as a city to, for our residents when they're in a crisis, specifically a fire.
Thank you. That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
The next item will be item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on February 6, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Finance Committee met Tuesday night with all five members present. We took up and dispatched a 12-item agenda in 34 minutes, continuing a trend of shockingly short meetings, at least by Finance Committee standards. Given how self-explanatory many the items were to the committee, I won't read through everything we recommended that you approved tonight, but here are a few top-line things I'd like you to know. We recommended that you approve tonight a $30,000 state grant to the Economic Development Division to plan programming for a green jobs training program for non-traditional students. The committee had a decent number of questions about this. The administration stated that these questions were about aspects of the program that are yet to be planned, and that's what the grant is for. We were promised an update when things do come into focus on that planning front. Then we recommended that you approve tonight a series of Community Preservation Act requests, including a cool $1.4 million into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and some contract extensions, two of which were just time-only extensions. And the third involves a higher contract amount for finishing the Central Hill construction work out front here. But it's, the higher amount is covered by the construction contingency in the original amount that was approved by this body. Both Counselor Scott and I expressed interest in seeing the veterans' memorials brought back out of storage and restored to their rightful place as soon as it's practical. It's something we hear about a lot from our veterans' community. And then there were two, two items, grant acceptances for the police department that were withdrawn by the administration. And we expect that those will be resubmitted in a different format here in the future. Everything else is captured nicely in Clerk Forssaliz's minutes. I'm sure everyone has or will read, will read those. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted. And, Mr. President, while I'm on the mic, I'll move to waive the readings of items 7.3 to 7.10 and 10.13 from tonight's agenda and ask that those be sent to Finance. Thanks.
Excellent. The committee report is laid on the table for approval. Those items are referred to Finance.
The next item is item 7.2, a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to Section 6-59 of the Code of Ordinances to amend the definition of guidelines.
For all of you who have been misdefining the word guidelines, this is your item. This item is referred to Legislative Matters.
Item 7.11 is a communication of the mayor conveying the 2023 Surveillance Technology Annual Report.
This item is placed on file with a copy to Legislative Matters.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the Memorialization Committee conveying the naming of a new park as part of the '74 Middlesex Ave development in honor of former State Senator Salvatore Sal Albano.
This is excellent. And I spoke to one of the people who staffs this, the memorial committee, who said that all of this information came originally from our state senator Pat Jalen's newsletter about the life of Sal Albano. So thank you to Senator Jalen as well.
That brings us to item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Okay, okay, okay. Through you, Mr. President, we, do you like bowling? Do you like bowling? Well, welcome to Somerville, the home of Lucky Strike, and at 325 Revolution Drive, which is applying for 117 devices, amusement devices. And I'm sure after I look through every single one, I will be very pleased to approve this. Actually, I'm going to move to approve this item as well as 9.4 through 9.6. And one more, 10.14 as well. And I motion to waive those readings. Thank you.
Those items are approved and referred to committee as noted. You got those?
9.2 and 9.3 we'll send to committee?
Yeah.
Great. Item 9.7 is a public communication from Danny DiCamillo submitting comments regarding blue bikes.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.8 is a public communication from Tag Pearson submitting comments regarding sidewalks.
Placed on file.
Item 9.9 is a public communication from 984 individuals, including seven residents, submitting comments regarding item 24-0089, a resolution in support of an enduring ceasefire in Gaza.
Placed on file.
Item 9.10 is a public communication from Representative Mike Conley submitting comments regarding item 24-0089, a resolution in support of an enduring ceasefire in Gaza.
Placed on file.
Item nine, excuse me, item 10.1 is in order by Counselor Klingon, that the Environmental Health Coordinator discuss alternatives to the use of bait traps containing poison to dispatch rats.
I'd like to sign on to this, as would Counselor Burnley, Counselor Klingon, and Counselor Wilson would as well. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd like to take this up in the Rodent Committee. There is a group of folks who have been educating the public around alternatives to the poison for a number of good reasons, which we will hear about. I actually haven't looked into it. I kind of want to go in, you know, fresh on this and hear, because I'm really interested to hear these alternatives. But I have been speaking to our health inspector, Collins Ziegler, and he'll be at the next Rodent meeting as well. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's germane, and it's time to take a look at other, we know the negative effects these poisons are having. And I know that the city, I think, is already starting to sort of move away from that. So I'm happy to take this up in committee.
Thank you, Counselor Klingon.
Item 10.2 is in order by Counselor Klingon, that the Director of Water and Sewer address the use of threatening notifications as part of the water meter replacement project.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I just, you know, I don't know if anybody's gotten complaints or heard. There's these orange, sort of like final notice, or we will shut off your water, very threatening messaging regarding the water meter changeout program. You know, there's questions as to whether or not these are auto-generated from, they say City of Somerville, but are they, are they from the contractor? Are they auto-generated? And sort of just what was, you know, who put the wording in there? I'd like to have a discussion about that. I think people were pretty upset at the strong language in it. And I know we all want to, we know we, you know, I support the changeout of the meters, but certainly don't want to be sending threatening letters. There was one other thing on this. Yeah, so just looking to have a discussion about that.
Thank you, Counselor. That item is referred to Public Works and Public Utilities.
Item 10.3 is in order by Counselor Klingon, that the Director of Housing and the Director of the Office of Housing Stability discuss the parameters of qualification used by building owners and managers in selecting lottery winners for awarding lower-income units.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. You know, I don't know if folks know, but a lot of these affordable units that we put into the market, the criteria by which people are selected has a lot to do with the building itself, the management. People are subject to credit checks, quarries, like whatever, basically, whatever criteria that the building comes up with. And I'm not saying that's necessarily a good idea or a bad idea. I'm just saying that I think we should all be aware because it definitely, you know, I'd hate to see somebody scrutinized, seemingly scrutinized on their credit score, but then somebody else not criticized. And maybe that other person had a child or something. Like, I think it's where, it opens up the door to some real, some, you know, possible discrepancies. There's a lot of power in the hands of the, sort of the choosers and the gatekeepers of those lists. And, you know, I've had somebody who was caught up in sort of this... those lists. And, um, you know, I've had somebody who was caught up in sort of this credit check situation and, um, unfortunately, I, I did not get a unit, uh, due to the credit check. Anyway, so it just came to surprise to me. Um, but again, maybe for very good reasons, I just like to have that conversation. And so we all, um, understand how these programs are really working and, um, and including up, and including erroneous charges, as they're called, which can be a lot of different things with these buildings that they, they can add on, uh, at some point, you know, including that we know that they're, like Water and Sewer are billed individually for some buildings. They're metered in, in the units. Um, and there's, there's other issues like that that, that are not under our purview, not in our control, obviously. But I think it's important that we, we understand, um, when we're getting excited about these units, just exactly what, uh, the folks who are chosen are up against.
Thank you. Uh, I would think to refer this to Housing and Community Development. We'll refer that to Housing and Community Development.
Item 10.5 is an order by Councilor Burnley that the Director of Web Content and Development include the Wage Theft Advisory Committee on the Department's Boards and Commissions and Authorities page and compile the agendas and minutes therein.
Councilor Burnley?
Thank you, uh, through you. Uh, as the new representative for the Council on the Wage Theft Advisory Committee, uh, it's been an interesting, uh, experience to learn about this, the body and how, how it does its work. Um, but it's also been, eh, I would say, an unnecessarily difficult, uh, challenge, given that if you look on the city's website currently, the only way you can find the previous minutes and agendas is effectively by knowing the dates of every previous meeting and finding it as an event, um, therein, going back years, you kind of have to say, "When was it? I don't know. Maybe it was this day in October or August or what have you." Uh, and if you don't know that, it's, it's very much kind of a crapshoot. Uh, I've personally been able to find maybe three agendas going back to 2021. Um, and the work of this body is incredibly important. I would argue now more than ever. Um, and it is work that the public is quite invested in, as we have workers who are, uh, subject to, um, wage theft and who may not have, you know, faith in our, uh, but our Council's ability to actually support them, um, because the information is so opaque and difficult to find, um, showing the work that is being done on this issue. Um, so I just think if we can get this all in one place and move forward in a more orderly and thorough way, it will help just boost the ability for our public to know, uh, that this city takes the wage theft very seriously and that we are working on it tirelessly. So, with that, I'd like for that to be approved.
Excellent. I'd like to co-sponsor that. And seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Item 10.7 is a resolution by Councilor Burnley recognizing February as Black History Month.
Councilor Burnley?
Thank you. And, and then there, there he goes, Councilor Imba left me. Uh, through you, I'd just like to, to point out that this is Black History Month. Uh, February's shortest month of the year, but a very powerful one that punches above its, uh, weight class. Um, and it's one in which I would just like to take a moment to, uh, recommit myself and hope that my colleagues recommit themselves to pushing forward on racial justice in this city. Um, we are a community that has a lot of pride in itself, rightly so, I would say, about how we push forward on progress on several different fronts, whether that is racial justice, housing justice, environmental justice, um, public health, all of which, um, the black community often disproportionately takes the, the height, some, in many cases, the highest, um, um, negative impacts on, um, whether that's issues like the black maternal mortality rates or infectious diseases in which, if folks remember, when the pandemic began, the black community, uh, and as well as the, uh, Latino community were the highest and most impacted communities across this state, as well as many others. I think it's important in this particular moment as nationally we see D E I, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion programs and policies coming under attack, in some cases being made illegal effectively, um, that we do as much as we can to speak up about racial justice, uh, and particularly in, in a community like Somerville where it was not that long ago, is in living memory, uh, when this body, I believe, had its first, uh, black council member at the time, alderman. Uh, and as far as I'm aware, this is the first time in Somerville's history where there's been more than two black counselors or aldermen at one time. Um, I think that's progress. That's, it's very exciting for me. Uh, I, I remember when I ran for office the first time, I reached out to Councilor Imba, who was, had the seat before me, and I said, "Hey, man, I don't wanna necessarily be the only one there. I wanna do this with you." Um, and then he left. And then he didn't, so, uh, I had to figure that out by myself, I guess. Um, but we have an opportunity, as always, to try to make history today, to make more black history today in a community where we have neighborhoods like Tin Hills, uh, which gets its name from what? The Tin Hill Farms, which was a 600-acre property purchased by the first governor of Massachusetts who did enslave indigenous populations and then passed down that property in pieces to families who, uh, enslaved African peoples and African Americans. Um, there is a, a plaque at Grimmin's Park, uh, in Tin Hills that gets into that history a little bit, but does not, uh, reference, uh, any of the, the really dark history that, uh, families like the Ushers and the Royals mourn Medford, um, partook in enslaving and taking away people's freedom. But we have an opportunity to write a new chapter for this city, and I really, really hope that we take the contributions that black members of this community have done for generations into account and that we honor them as much as we would honor any other community. With that, open to hearing from my colleagues, but, you know, how, hoping this gets approved.
Thank you. Councilor Imba?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanna, yeah, through you, to Councilor Burnley, thank you for putting this forward. It's, uh, it's just something that was probably long overdue, but I'm grateful for your leadership and your courage. Thank you. I wanna sign on to this resolution to Mr. President.
Excellent. The entire Council would like to sign on to that. And with that, the item is approved. Thank you.
An item 10.8 is an order by Councilor Strezzo requesting approval of a transfer of $1,000 from the City Council Legal Services Account to the City Council Office Supplies Account for the purchase of furniture and supplies to create a space for children in the City Council Chamber.
Councilor Strezzo?
Hello. So, this item was, I've been working with our legislative liaison on this with the concept that we're trying to get to is that it, all spaces, uh, in our city are, should be welcome for children, families, guardians, caregivers as well. And what I'm aiming to do is create a, a space in our city council chambers, just an itty-bitty little corner where we can have, uh, small books or, and a, a small bookshelf and carefully vetted, um, items that might appeal to a child so that we, we are really making this space welcome and so that parents and families can come in here and, and be a part of the process, whether they wish to, to speak at school committee or whether they wish to testify on, um, an issue that is before us, or if they just want to stop and, and, uh, be in a city council meeting. We have to open up these spaces and make them as, as available and accessible as possible. This whole concept that, that parents have to scramble and figure out what, where childcare should happen or how it should happen. Um, we need to change that. And really, we talk about inclusivity. We have to be as open and available as possible. One of the reasons that, uh, is, as you may recall, we now have a refrigerator and I, I thank our, our clerk for making, Madam Clerk, thank you so much for making that possible, is I want that refrigerator there for any, um, any of us, uh, that may be breastfeeding or to perhaps store breast milk or a, a employee on the, in City Hall that may need it as well. We need to make these spaces open and accessible for all and really validate that a large percentage of the population breastfeeds or cares for small children. And it, we need to shatter that barrier and create a new narrative that, um, that parents, children, guardians, caregivers are part of our community. And we need to stop pretending like they aren't. So I am asking your support on this, colleagues, uh, that this goes through and that this gets, gets funded.
Excellent. Councilor Imba?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to the good Councilor, wanna thank you for bringing this forward. I don't know if you're aware, but, you know, families in this community or in this city are minority voting bloc. So, there's no way that we, the only way we can, you know, incentivize and show that we do care is by creating some of this infrastructure that really encourages them to feel welcome. So, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Councilor Pineda Newfeld would like to sign on. Um, I think this is a wonderful idea and would like to refer it to Finance. Councilor Burnley and Said, Said would like to sign on. Councilor Burnley, do you wanna speak?
Thank you. I, I had some questions, but I, if it's going to Finance, I, I can ask them there. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Item 10.9 is an order by Councilor Strezzo that the Director of Parking establish alternative drop-off zones, including reverse-direction drop-off zones in front of the City Hall concourse from the hours of 7:30 a.m. to 8:15 a.m. and 2:15 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., while portions of Highland Avenue are under active construction near the high school, City Hall, and the Central Library.
Councilor Strezzo?
All right. Stay with me, colleagues. What this order is trying to do is hopefully alleviate some of the, uh, bumper-to-bumper traffic while this whole construction process is happening along Highland and is about to happen on Highland and will continue to happen on Highland. And it's winter, and at the same time, we have, uh, high school students that end up getting dropped off, many of them, and, uh, I watch the parents, um, just look frazzled, um, as this happens all at the same time. Meanwhile, we have our City Hall concourse that has been, um, it's probably been about two years, that became one-way, which is fine. But at this time that I'm envisioning this happening, and I've been asking around, uh, the administration on this, and, uh, I think it's a discussion to have in Committee. But there, it really isn't a loss if the, if City Hall concourse is two ways in these allotted times. Um, I think it can alleviate some of the pressure of the community and the surrounding abutters. I think, um, I think if it's very specific, it, it could absolutely, uh, help the process out. So I'm asking that this be sent to Committee.
Very well. This item is referred to the Traffic and Parking Committee.
Item 10.10 is an order by Councilor Strezzo that the Director of Mobility and the Director of Parking discuss if and where additional Americans with Disabilities Act walking routes and ADA parking spots have been designated for visitors to the high school, City Hall, and the Central Library while Highland Avenue construction is underway and while current routes and ADA parking spots may be inaccessible due to construction.
Councilor Strezzo?
I still hear, uh, as I'm sure some of you probably do, that, uh, there aren't enough, uh, ADA handicap spots around the library, um, since the redesign happens. And often what I hear and sometimes see is that contractors will park in the ADA spots on Highland Ave. And while we're preparing for more construction to happen, I would like Mobility to address this and, uh, and these departments to really have a long, thorough discussion because we need to really be, every single project, we need to be more precise on how this is affecting and impacting those that may not be able to, um, easily walk a little farther or if they can't take a bike, or how this affects all of us in the community. And I'm asking this be sent to Committee as well.
This item is referred to the Committee on Traffic and Parking.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Mr. President.
Are there any late items?
I see no late items before the Council.
All right. So we need to take a vote on everything on the table.
Indeed. This will be on approval of items 1.3 to 1.4, 3.1, 4.1 to 4.4, 5.1, 6B, 9.1, 9.4 to 9.6, 10.1 to 10.7, 10.9 to 10.11, 10.14, and one late item, and to place on file, 7.11, 8.1, 9.7 to 9.10, and 10.12.
On those items?
Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Imba?
Yes, please.
Councilor Burnley?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Pineda Newfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated.
Excellent. And on adjournment?
And on adjournment. Councilor McLaughlin? Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes, please.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes, please.
Councilor Scott?
Yes, indeed.
Got it. Councilor Imba?
We?
Councilor Burnley?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Pineda Newfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, this Council is adjourned.